You're good? Okay, seven oh one, so we'll call the meeting to order. We'll call the zoning official zoning board review meeting for April twelfth to order. Roll call, please.
Robert. Robert Nigerian.
Yeah.
Scott Martin.
Yeah.
Paul Pasquale. Liddy Mike Antonio. Christopher Zidio.
Here.
Gail Denomi.
There.
And Michael Assam.
Correct. Well, actually, he has submitted his reservation, so. I think with the transition from Gary, which may have been lost in the translation, he did submit an email to all of you. So what I'll do is I'll work with Carl and we'll resend this email. And in working with Larry, our zoning official, we'll resend it to everybody so it could happen. It wasn't something he wanted to do, but because business and legal practice. After COVID, cases multiplied and his cattle was going to be so extensive that he felt he was going to do it justice to the cattle. So with a heavy heart, he said, can't deny it. But you'll, I'll make sure that Carl goes in the archives and resends the email.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, can you say that? I don't really believe I was part of that. I think it might have been just you and Carrie.
Okay, I'll find it.
Yeah, if you just send it to me, yeah.
We will make two minor adjustments. I don't think you have the. The agenda was upgraded and properly posted for it, Carl.
Yes.
So what we'll do is the new agenda was to include a workshop. So if you change item ten, the new item ten will be workshop, which will go over the rules and regulations of the board. And item eleven will be the introduction of the zoning official and the new clerk. And then twelve will be agenda. That looks like a long meeting, but we all know it's not so long. Item three, Steve is with us. I'm sorry, this is the associate solicitor with us via Zoom. So he is present. Item three, disclosure of no compensation or pension credits received by the board members. Item four, disclosure and notice the zoning board of the new membership will disclose any expedite communications about any contested or material adjudicatory facts or opinions concerning the merits of any application before the zoning board. Item five, these minutes were all distributed. So item five is the approval of the minutes from March first, twenty twenty-two. Are there any requests for revisions or omissions or concerns on the motion for the minutes from March first? Okay, here are no objections. We have a motion to approve from the second outside permission. All those in favor? I, both. They made us pass. Next, we'll do the minutes. Again, you receive these from March eighth, twenty twenty-two. And I would note that we'll continue to do this, but what we started to do is what our member, Gail, has graciously accepted the responsibility to assist in preparing and expediting the minutes and has helped us nicely. So any issues, any concerns with the March eighth minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to. We have a motion to approve the minutes from March eighth.
A second.
We have a second, prefer a motion and a second. All those in favor? I propose approval. Okay, item seven, approval of the minutes from March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Again, the request for revisions, corrections, or additions, if there are none, we can entertain a motion to approve. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March fourth second. You have a second?
One second. Ready?
We have. Liddy, Mr. Martin and Donnie will have a second on that. All those in favor? I propose. Okay, item eight will be the. Yeah, yeah, the school street decision regrettably has not been prepared or completed yet, so we have to delay that. Yeah, I'm not pleased with that. We'll work on it at the at the end. Once we check with the zoning official to see if the office is up to speed with any appropriations that are pending, and if not, then we'll just call a meeting at the next regularly scheduled time to approve that school street decision. So that will be continued. Again, we won't tell until the meeting. Item nine is approval of the decision for ZBR twenty-two dash oh two, application for Elizabeth, eighteen, Elizabeth, one eighteen Elizabeth Avenue. The document, that was distributed during the course of the day. Yesterday, I believe, or today, we made some corrections to it. They were grammatical for the most part, so if there are any corrections or concerns with the way the decision was written, please make us aware of it.
The nine point three point two B. You have applicant husband's broken hip injury. Yeah, it did testify their husband is deceased. And I would like to say testimony further established that in the light of the applicant's insert late husband, delete recent broken hip injury, resulting fears over health concerns of moving alone, the safety of the applicant and family, and granted, instead of relief outweighs the hardship that would be suffered if the relief were not granted. So we have an insert of late and deletion of the word deletion.
Well, what I did at the interim, I thought you were in the spring. Again, it was just the two of us, plus the solicitor. He modified it, we didn't get a chance to send it out to everyone, but when they read the modification, so it's quite similar to what. So what was modified, I have the old and the new. And we can approve it if we'd like, pending all of the receiving the most recent one. They don't think they'll have any protection to it, but we just find the way it was written. Yeah, so originally it was what you have. Just finding a fact. Was B or D?
Eight.
Okay.
B second power. Second. Page three.
Oh, wait. Hold on, yeah. Yeah. This finding of fact establishes. Yeah, it's what it will read now is for nine point three point two B. This finding of fact established that if the marriage were not granted, it would amount to more than a hearing. Testimony further established that in light of the applicant's husband's being recently deceased, resulting fears over health concerns and living alone, the safety of the applicant and family, and granted, said relief outweighs the hardship that would be suffered if the relief were not granted. So that's the way it was. And that is acceptable to all of us. I had made. It was Carl, it was this solicitor. The word deceased, or there was some reference to the fact that the husband had deceased. And I thought it was misleading or is misrepresentative of what was the truth, so we needed to fix it because when you read it, you would have thought that the husband was still alive. It's a formal document and we have to get it right, so are you good with that?
Uh, yeah.
We'll, we'll have Carl. Carl will send it out again. And just so we can get that and make sure whatever that has. The other two corrections were minor in nature. What was it is or present fact versus. With that being said, do we have any other concerns with the decision? There are none, I'll take a motion to accept the decision for one eighteen Elizabeth Avenue, ZBR two dash oh two. I'll have a roll call vote. Or we have a motion to accept. I'll make a motion to approve the decision for ZBR, application ZBR, going to vote for one eighteen. Second, please. Second, we have a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Robert Nigerian.
Yes.
Scott Martin.
Yes.
Liddy Mike Antonio.
Yes.
Gail.
Burling Hall.
Burling Hall? I just got the whole now. I have, I have someone did to me. Yes. And you click the right to deal.
Yes. We should probably keep it as only in this decision since that's the one it is, right? Okay?
That's fine.
Okay, so that takes care of paperwork. Then what we did was some time ago, we, we it had been months and maybe years with COVID, we had reviewed the rules and regulations for the zoning board. And just to clarify, we do have the right to revise and prepare our own rules. We don't need to go up the chain of command. Carl, if you'd like, do you want to? Do you want to walk us through any specific revisions? Did we know revisions or did we just kind of create a new file?
The, well, as you said, Mr. Chairman, it was probably a little over a year ago that we first started reviewing these, the rules, because they had not been amended since, I believe, it was two thousand thirteen. So I used my experience in other communities and I used a couple of examples from other communities as well as the existing rules of the board. And I went through and just, it was basically just clearing up a lot of the rules that were existing on for the board. At the time, it was back when we were doing a Zoom meeting. We went through the rules. There were a couple of amendments. Basically, I think the biggest amendment that we came across was the timeline for appeals, which I basically just went right to state statute on just the twenty day timeline deadline for primary appeals and let that rest. But then we went through between the lack of business for the board or when we did have business, we had two or three hearings on those meetings, and so we didn't really have time to have workshops. So this got kind of put on a back burner. So the last time we met, you had asked to put this on the agenda and I brought it back up. I just sent it back out to the board just for for your, one more time to review it. And then possibly if you want to do it tonight, we can vote on, vote on the rules. And then I can amend the adopted date of the rules and then make copies. Technically, a copy of the rules are supposed to be included when an application is given to an applicant so they know what to expect. So we will go back to that once we approve these rules. And I mean, that's about it. I don't know if anybody, I know Mr. Martin has brought up a suggestion before the meeting. He was gonna bring it up during the meeting, so.
Okay, well, I'm entertaining any comments or questions or concern now, Mr. Martin.
Chairman, it is page seven. We're talking about meetings of board and show the minutes from that second meeting. So turn it to potentially less extended by the new school, well, just getting numbers. News usually what was on the pass is the board extends for fifteen minutes more. So if you want to add that in, maybe a lot more, essentially fifteen minutes or fifteen, that's a certain.
Well, maybe what we could do is if we'd like, because that's kind of what we've done. I mean, yes, you could say that we would, you could extend it in fifteen minute intervals.
What we've done in the past. Yeah, but usually just fifteen, like we would honor it by ten hours.
Yeah, but I think you could also be mindful of the fact that that's a subjective decision that can be made on the fly by, by the city members and during the course of the meeting, if we decide that it looks like we've got ten minutes to wind them, then many times for the applicant comes and says, well, I can finish in ten, so we extend it to ten. So instead of tying our hands and make it more procedural, if we just leave it open ended. Well, then what you could suggest is that we put an end point where it cannot go past ten forty-five or eleven. I mean, I think the spirit of the rule is that we should expect to the ten o'clock because there's a million reasons not to. So if you want to say not to exceed ten thirty, we can do that.
And just to draw your attention, Mr. Chairman, there is a section in here that does say these rules can't be amended by the board at any time, so you could override yourself at the end anyway, so. So but it's totally up to the board's recommendation.
Man, I would suggest we leave it as is, but not be, that's what it is.
And I think also, Mr. Chairman, as you know, the, especially in the recent last few years anyway, we've been very cognizant of timing enter for the board and not overloading the board where you're having too many applications at once. We have a pretty good guide of what's going to be asked for the board and whether or not you can put two, three, even four matters on at once, depending on what the actual ask of the applicant is.
Um, Carl, under minutes, do you need to know anything about posting to the state or that's not real? That's an administrative duty that's not the board's.
Yeah, that's administrative, it's a state law, but we, we have to, we have to post it in the timeline on that.
Frankly, I thought the document was quite well prepared, very concise, not overly wordy.
It's only one page.
Well, there's a lot, there's a lot that needed to be addressed. I think it's, you prepared it in a professional way, but without excessive deliberation, if you will, or expounding on things beyond what they needed. But I don't think there's anything in here that isn't clearly refined. Because the only other question I had was that it's been included in here already, can I? You submit an application, it is in here, is it not? And then you go to the zoning, the zoning official gives you a date and you say, I can't make that date. Let me get back to it, it's like my lawyer. And then a month goes by and the zoning official calls and you still didn't give them the date. Would we wanted to not allow that to happen by saying, if you submit, you're either ready in an exquisitous fashion to appear or you're not. Because I believe at the time it was submitted trying to leverage on something else that.
Well, I think, I think what, and to give me a wrong, but I think what you're referring to, Mr. Chairman, is the, going back about four or five, maybe longer than five years ago, the winter of that case. That one there lingered for an awful long time because of regulatory action. But in standard practice, we wouldn't give a, an applicant a fully, say that they're fully vested unless we have a meeting day and ready to get front of the board and have their attorney ready. It was, it was just that one time that the applicant was ready to go before the board and then there was a realization that the zoning ordinance was not up to par to address that kind of ask from a applicant. So I think that's going to be a few or far between application.
Yeah, I thought it. And I think, you know, part of that was using the word vested. And I guess that goes back to the ambiguity, which I still think we should keep it as written, but there's always that question. Different zoning officials at different times have said, well, I can't ask him for more than what he gave me, he or she. He or she came with this application and I submitted it and it's up to the board to say, you know, for as an example, Elizabeth Avenue. This zoning map, the site plan, in my opinion, and I think the board agreed, was not a proper document because it didn't show the overlay, so therefore you had no way to prove the official was not, the survey official, professional was not providing a document that showed that here is the nonconformity, here is the encroachment. So the question then becomes, does the zoning official kick it back? And then the burden legally falls on him and he says, well, he didn't give me what, so I'm not receiving this application. Or does it come to us and we have to then say it's incomplete and kick it back? Because I've also been told by the solicitors that we can't before the meeting come up with a laundry list and say, well, you forgot three things. No, we can't in that regard, although we can't formally request it, which means that everybody has to come here. If they have a meeting, they have to say, you didn't give us three things, the home, if he knew this would date certain. Is that, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, I agree with that, and just, let's go back to the and I don't want to get into specific cases, which we really shouldn't, but there shouldn't be a time where the boards be presented, presented things the day before or the even two or three days before. And I think that's what happened with that last case, that she was up against a gun and then the surveyor didn't do his, was, did not really serve the this client well and gave her a sub, sub standard document presented to the board. But that's where the zoning official and staff get to to make sure that everything that's in front of the board is submitted for review, especially when it comes to documents like that, which is, you know, just setbacks, you know, setbacks being on a document. But, but that is addressed, that is addressed in here, that says that.
Exactly. Or something, something is a bit of issue, you expect it normally to be seven years prior to the case.
Yes.
No show put it in here.
Exactly, especially, I mean, it's one thing if it's a simple picture or something like that, but when you're talking professional documents, it's a.
Okay, so we'll leave it as is. I mean, again, I think the board is very consistent in the way it entertains. You know, we're never going to play hardball with the applicant, we always try to work with people.
Absolutely.
But if you're a corporate applicant, you come with a twenty-seven page document in the day of the meeting, you know, that's what we want to try to avoid. And trying to help a local homeowner that didn't know that the zoning map wasn't prepared correctly, of course, we we have the leverage where we could just change the rule and ask for whatever we want to ask. So, so we'll leave it the way it is and we'll rely on the professionals to note that the application is complete. Okay, great. Do you have any other?
Now, let me, let me weigh in. Can you hear me? I need to advise you on something. So it's good that you're talking about it in terms of the collection of evidence and keeping things in an open mindset to build a record. But you got to remember something is very important. You're a quasi judicial board. Your authority comes when you meet as a group, doesn't come beforehand. You can't ask any questions before the meeting asks, you can't have rolling quarums. I've been adamant about that for years and I think this board does a fine job with that. And if you didn't, I'd say so because my job is to protect you. But that said, clearly the best case scenario of an applicant is going to need a continuance for an attorney is to notify the zoning official in advance, which has happened just recently. And then through email, you're able to pick a date and have a continuance. Once an application is vested, if an attorney wants a continuance, you can't deny that attorney a continuance. You'll wind up in superior court, pay legal fees because you have fundamental Fourteenth Amendment due process that underpins everything you do because property rights are involved. So the best way to summarize it, Dave and I talk about this kind of stuff often, is to to keep your mind open that, look, you're gathering documents, you're gathering information so that you guys can make an informed decision whether to approve or deny. Take in everything you can that you're given. Never turn away from documents that are given to you in an open meeting. Somebody hands you documents that night, twenty-seven page document, take it. Put it as part of the record. If you don't think that you can make a decision that night based on the reading of that information, you table it and you continue it to another meeting. You have that kind of power, that kind of authority. The key to keep in your mind is always let everything come in that you possibly can. Listen to all testimony before you make a decision. And don't ever deny somebody the right to continue a matter when they may need more time because we'll wind up in superior court paying legal fees and we don't want to do that. Thank you.
No, I think it's clear that we never don't receive, we just say we continue because we can't digest the information. So we would never, ever turn it away. I think what I was also going to note, maybe what we should do is that if the board were ready to vote to accept the rules, if the solicitor, as an associate solicitor, had had a chance to review them, we should probably prove them subject to his review to make sure that there are any legal entanglements. And if he feels that there's a need for something to be revised, he can send the revision through and members can react accordingly. But I don't want to, I don't want to live out these rules and find out that we, so I think definitely we'll make a contingent vote to approve if that's in order, subject to review by council.
Yeah, that's very prudent, Chairman. Thank you. That's, that's very good. And I'll review them thoroughly. I'll go over with David, who's the main solicitor, and we'll put our heads together, see if I'm missing something or he sees something I don't. And then we'll, we'll let you know, they'll be well vetted. Good idea, thank you.
Okay, with that being said, if I hear no concerns or revisions, do anyone who accept the rules, zoning board review rules and regulations that's submitted on this date for this meeting? Mr. Martin, I'll make a motion to approve. Right now?
One second.
No, I'm just, I'll subvert you. I know you use the business of the white, don't have a little bit of a second. I guess we have a roll call because it's a procedural, there's rules, right? So roll call vote, please.
Scott Martin.
Yes.
I'm so sorry.
You forgot.
Robert Nigerian.
Yes.
Liddy Mike Antonio. Gail Denomi.
Yes.
Christopher Zidio.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, just for procedural. So what we're saying is the board has approved the rules, we'll send it to the solicitors for review. If they come back and they say it's good to go, I'll just establish rules.
Correct. That was a contingent, that was a contingent, a conditional vote of approval pending acceptance and approval by a legal counsel. If they request revisions, I'll make them and then we'll just accept them as law.
Okay.
And then you can distribute the document after that, sign off.
Sounds good. And before we.
I don't think we have to formally redo it because the record shows that it was intended to be a conditional approval, subject to review. I think we will. Well, I don't, I don't think it matters because again, it's internal, plus it's not a legal document that goes beyond the software. You're right, we should have done it that way, but I don't think it's worthy of doing it over again.
Mr. Chairman, just before we move on, there's two other documents I gave you real quick. The top one was a, it's actually a checklist for when the board is presented with a zoning application that addresses six point one nine for a special use permit. That's basically what the ordinance says right now. It's just broken down, it just gives you a writing area to write down your notes to make whether or not the applicant met their burden for what he makes of your findings as a fact. And then the other document, which is the last document in the packet, is just the preliminary language on what we were discussing about removing. And then the other document, which is the last document in the packet, is just the preliminary language on what we were discussing about removing some language on the dimensional variants. Uh, I just had to put, put it fully into a proper format, send it up to the solicitors for their final review.
Um, what was the last document, the nine one three form two?
Yes, this one.
Yeah, and just to, uh, for, for Carl's sake, I had asked him, you know, because the water jet six point one nine was coming in front of us so many times, we had workshop, we had, uh, templates for the other variants, this and special permits, but we didn't have template. All this is, is to assist members. It specifies everything that we have to, all the thresholds that we have to meet, so, uh, this is a, it's a, it's a good benefit to us because they'll have to be hoping for the pages again. And then that last one was just to, again, get everyone to accept and to stamp approval that, uh, that sentence was, had been stripped in front of the records, was no longer applicable next time there are changes of the state law. And once that makes its way, we were invited now because that's what we were instructed to do.
Right, it's just clear the language we were.
Yeah, but we'll just get this, uh, approved formally and go from there. Okay, thank you, wonderful, well, I'd like to thank you, uh, for a very, uh, professional presentation.
Uh, could you just send this, the, uh? Absolutely, yeah, sure, I will.
Okay, that takes us to, um, it was very good workshop. So item eleven would be the interim chairman of the new zoning and building officials and clerk. And I think we'll turn it over to the town administrator to play the next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Your congratulations, Gail.
Thank you.
Good, building, that can be very difficult to escape from that.
Everybody's building.
Well, it brings me great pleasure to introduce Larry Enright, uh, he has close to maybe over twenty years of experience, uh, being building a zoning official. Such many of these, Smithville, one, two, one socket. It's a pleasure to work with him and have a discussion about, well, I'm also comfortable with building stuff. Who's got work in the zoning, very, very much impressive, and so is the staff there, very impressive.
Yeah, he's all right.
Yeah, he's all right. So you, I, I, I think, uh, you know, it's sad to see Kerry go, but it's always great to have another good person come on board, bless them. I'm looking forward to working with him.
Well, we look forward to working with him.
So nice to meet everybody.
Nice to meet you.
Just gonna check my heatbed a little bit and feel a bit more acquainted with the others and see where we're at. Probably some adjustments, I'm sure you want me to be aggressive because I'm not sure how you guys work. Try to work out the bugs and we'll, we'll move forward from there.
Sure, uh, before we, I guess we can come back to that, but we should probably, before we adjourn, uh, we should just get a sense of where we might be with adding applications, but I didn't know if you wanted to continue.
Yes. Of course, I want to thank Jen for, for stepping up and being the recording secretary, thank you, Jen.
Thank you, Jennifer.
And Tiffany Riley, it's a recent addition. Yeah, so she's, uh, she's the recording clerk of the town, uh, exceptional skill sets. And, um, making discussions there as soon as the problem, Jen was, uh, was trying to take more family time, more time. Who could not use more of that? Um, and then Tiffany, she'd be happy to do it, so I think you're gonna be very impressed with Tiffany as well.
Wonderful, thank you very much, welcome Tiffany. Jen's still with us, she's just staying up there, so. And you know what, then now that we, you know, it's not often that we have, this much change all at the same time, so, you know, both the, the four of us or the three of us, um, it's always okay for Gail to be involved because it can just be the two of us and we're not discussing any matters other than administrative matters. She has been a great assistance to Jen in, uh, helping edit or prepare minutes and she can serve that purpose if you need her to. Um, and then for Larry, uh, I'll just be in touch with you, you know, on a regular basis, um, to see where we're at with schedules and what applications are out there and what aren't. Uh, and I think what we want to make sure that we do from now on is really, uh, this was just an odd experience where we had two decisions in three minutes that were happening and I personally, I don't like that because it doesn't reflect properly on the board and nobody can do our job, so we're gonna work to make sure that that doesn't happen. Uh, and that we get the solicitor, uh, the information he needs to write the decisions exeditiously and that the minutes get posted and prepared in accordance with the law, but also to the appearance to members and implement, so. Um, before we finish, Larry, do you know of, or does Carl know of, anything that's pending?
I don't think we have anything.
Yeah, I think, uh, the, uh, the only, we have, we have one pending that's waiting for a planning board hearing, so it's not ready to become, go to the board yet. And then, uh, then the other matter that we have.
Okay, so that being said, uh, today is the twelfth, uh, should we have another meeting just for the decision or should we continue it to the, uh, like, appeal date?
Uh, I mean, the, I, I think we could just be real quick on the twenty sixth.
I would prefer that.
Yeah, and, uh, and I know there's some, some people with conflict, but I think it's just administrative, we, we just need five members of the board for five minutes and that's it, so we can probably handle it myself with the board.
Okay, so let's do that, let's schedule, uh, which is the next regularly scheduled date.
Correct, we'll make sure it gets on the, uh, the Secretary of State's website, uh, that as long as we have five members myself, we can do that.
So let's do that and then that will be, we'll do the minutes of this meeting and we'll do the decision, approval decision for our school screen.
Excuse me, I just, uh, Tiffany will be ready that week, so I will just be there and replace it. Uh, and I just want to know, I'm still gonna be with us with Phil, so Tiffany, I can only tell that.
Okay.
But, um, we'll try to get, uh, covered.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's, it's going to be a ten minute meeting, you know, reconsidering, not even read it, review it, approve it in the second of the minutes, but this way we can get back on track and, uh, you know, do things in the proper way. Okay, wonderful.
Chairman.
Chairman. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me just jump in for a minute, I want to thank Jen for that because the templates and the preparation of the templates based on the minutes is a critical function to writing these documents. We're writing them for ten years and, uh, I'm always open to constructive criticism. Tonight's the first time I actually had stuff that had to be changed, I have no ego about it, whatever it has to be, it has to be, I just want to make sure it's in a legal format so that if there's an appeal, we're in the right place. Jen did a tremendous job, very good job, so getting this next decision done and then if it's gonna be Tiffany, then I'm sure Jen can show her how to do the templates and, and we'll be in good shape, so. Now, I appreciate that, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Oh, good, well, that's good too, that's some consistency there. Okay, wonderful. Well, again, welcome to the new employees, uh, good, good wishes for continued, uh, work for the town for then upstairs. And, uh, and we'll see what the next year brings to us. But that being said, I think we can, Dan, motion to adjourn. We have a motion second. Just a second, all those in there?
Aye.
Thank you.